Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening for our work session. We'll just go ahead and start rocking and rolling here. So, Dr. Register, you are on.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. I have been looking forward to this presentation. There's been so much conversation about, over the last few months, about performance of schools, performance of systems. And board members have received an earlier copy, an earlier iteration of what you're going to see presented tonight. And it's an academic performance framework. And one of the concerns that we have sometimes is how do you get a good comprehensive look at how schools and districts are performing? One measure might, for one year, might be a particular mark in time, but not very comprehensive in terms of time or comprehensiveness in really evaluating schools and systems. And we've been testing this approach for really a few months now. And we've presented it to principals. Principals have had an opportunity to look at it and to discuss it. And we're beginning to develop quite a bit of confidence in what we have as an academic performance framework. And Dr. Paul Changus has led this work, but it's been formed by Dr. Stinson, Alan Coverstone, Jay Steele back there, who we'll call him to speak sooner or later. That's a joke. But absolutely, Brenda Steele, others who have really taken a hard look at this in measuring performance of schools. And with that brief introduction, it's almost getting to be too long, I want to turn it over to Paul and let Paul start a conversation about this and take questions and observations from the board. Paul will turn it over to you.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
And we will take questions as we go and certainly an opportunity at the end, because I know there'll be questions particularly as we get into the school level data. You should have a copy of the PowerPoint we'll be going through as well as a preliminary list of school data for 2011-12. And let me emphasize, this is preliminary. This is still a working document, but we feel pretty good about the measures we have. A lot of people have been involved in this process and will continue to be. This framework belongs to all of us. I'm always reluctant to try to summarize the work that schools do in one number because we can't measure everything of value that occurs in schools. But we also can't ignore critical pieces of information that are available to us. And I know that I've had conversations with board members at different points about different rankings of schools that come out, different websites, accountability systems and so forth. And you can get very different results when you pull one piece of data, you know, from the multitudes of data that we get. So what we've tried to do are hit some key items, some key measures of student achievement, progress, college readiness and so forth, to look at a more balanced picture of school performance. And we'll go into more detail shortly. I do want to state that this process started independently. Alan Coverstone and the Office of Innovation were interested in looking at measures to look at evaluating the progress of charter schools and how we monitor that. Our office had started probably a couple of years ago looking at this information for a couple of reasons. One, we'll be asked to help inform decisions about progress of a school. And it can be very confusing to look at five different documents and just at a glance try to tell what's going on. Sometimes all of the information points in one direction, a lot of times it points in different directions. And how do we prioritize and weight each of those? The other thing is that as we go forward in trying to evaluate the initiatives of this district, they don't occur in isolation. We think the school is a critical unit of measurement when we look at evaluation of our initiatives. How successful they are depends on that school, the leadership in that building, the buy-in by teachers, and whether or not there's fidelity to implementation in terms of those initiatives. So that, plus the fact that we're focused on networking of schools, which is a concept that we, you know, we have felt we need to look at those, how we call it sometimes, hidden gems that are out there, schools that are doing really well for the populations they serve. They may not make a school, you know, list, honor roll because of the challenges they face, but they're doing an outstanding job when you look at the total picture. And they can serve as a model for other schools. So with all of that being said, we're going to get into the framework and get into the specifics. The first slide we have talks about possible framework uses. And let me say that these are just possibilities. We have, as a group, to make decisions about where we want to go with this. It should be about our efforts to raise student achievement. That's the first thing that we were told when we talked to our network lead principals. Everything starts with that concept. But it needs to support our accountability status. We have a state accountability system. Sometimes we've had questions about, well, why don't we just rely on the state system? But we feel that while it's, we do believe that the accountability system we have currently is a real step forward from what we had before. Any system's going to have limitations. And there were some areas that we felt needed to be addressed. And we're going to talk specifically about those areas later. But we don't want something that's totally independent of that system, and it needs to be aligned with it. We wanted standardized metrics that we're all looking at the same page when we make these types of decisions and that we share this with all of our stakeholders. But I want to emphasize that we're talking about informing and not determining key decisions based on strictly the data. Everything has to be taken in context in terms of that performance. But we, as I said earlier, we can't ignore the data that's there. And we want a set of transparent indicators. And I know that the board is interested in having its own scorecard to monitor school performance. We're working on a strategic plan as a district. All of these should be aligned in terms of what we value and hold as our key indicators. We know that this will change over time. We know that there's new assessments that are coming with Common Core. But I hope that the basic framework we have in terms of how we weight and value achievement measures versus growth measures versus school culture measures is something that's pretty stable. And essentially what we're doing is tweaking the system as we get the new data. We do know that one of the key decisions we'll need to make is we give schools more discretion or autonomy is how to hold them accountable. And that's one of the goals of this process. But all of these decisions on how we use this system are going to depend on how comfortable everybody feels with the data we have. So when I say it's still a work in progress, we're still validating the measures, we're looking at multiple years of data. I've shared with you 2011-12. We started looking at what happened from 2010 to 2011 and how it holds up. And I'll share some global statistics with you toward the end of the presentation. Some of the measures are going to be pretty consistent over time. Some are going to change quite a bit from year to year. Growth tends to be more fluid. When you look at just how well kids do on a given day when they take an achievement test, that's a more stable measure. It's also more highly correlated with socioeconomic status and some things that are sometimes outside of our control. But one of the positives as we've looked at two years of data is that it is showing some sensitivity to one-year change, that we're seeing movement so that we should be able to identify those quick turnaround situations. So I'm going to let Jay, who can join us if he would like here at the table, and Alan, to talk about how we're already starting to utilize the data. Again, it's still in the first draft, but Jay, if you want to start off.
Sure. I asked Alan to create a framework on how we're going to select the lead principals, the next round of lead principals, to implement the school-based leadership model that will be expanded over the next three years, that all schools will be run by lead principals. In order to set that criteria, we looked at this information, the data from the achievement levels, to determine who would be eligible to apply for those positions. So as the first cut, or if you want to use that term, the first criteria to be, the eligibility criteria, would be the schools that are in the excelling or achievement levels, the green areas, which you'll see in your chart. They would be the ones invited to apply as the first set of criteria to be lead principals. And then from there, we would start looking at leadership capability through interview process, through school visits, through a portfolio review, making sure that they possess the leadership skills we're looking for and demonstrate the leadership in school improvement, the leadership in initiatives that are in their school, and they've built a capacity in their school that they can be out of the building and helping other schools, and the school will continue to function at a high level. So taking that data, looking at a two-year average of 2010, 11, 11, 12, to determine who would be eligible, and then eventually going to a three-year average for Phase Two, which would be a year from now. So Alan has put together that criteria, so I'll let him speak on anything else there.
Yeah, nothing more to add there, other than this is one use that it can be put to in identifying people who have something to offer and then fine-tune your selection from there. We already have the frameworks in place to use this very effectively in evaluating charter schools' progress year to year. It does evaluate their progress on the same set of balanced metrics that we would use to assess the effectiveness of any of the schools in the district. So we feel like that's pretty aligned with our overall goal to add to the number of schools and seats that are delivering for us on the mission that we have. And we would look very specifically then at three years of data and have already begun to put together exactly how that fits for decisions related to potential early revocation for a string of years of distinctly subpar performance, perhaps not placing it in the bottom 5 percent, but certainly not delivering the gains that we hope to see from the schools. Likewise, on the other end, for persistent achievement at the highest ends of the scale, we would have an easier process in terms of renewal because we'd want to renew the schools that were delivering consistently high results and showing that on those metrics. And also the possibility for replication and thinking about extending those schools' models to other schools or, you know, evaluating applications for replication that would come through. So it has, you know, as Paul mentioned, we sort of began on this at different places. And we got the Performance Management Replication and Closure Grant through NACSA and began working on some of this. And we're able to come together with Paul and the work that he's done. So it really has a lot of the good, you know, experience and flair of Tennessee and Tennessee's numbers and the vast experience that Paul brings to the table on that. But with also the concept of performance management as it's being deployed in other districts where they're managing their charter school growth and indeed all their schools at the same time. So it's been a good collaboration to get to this point. But there are a number of those kind of very specific uses for which we really would like to see three-year trends in order to use this data, but we feel like it can be very useful once we have that.
And then not only choosing the leadership using this data of the next round of lead principals, but also this data can also help us form those networks. Looking at across the data, looking at if there is a problem with the TEL survey, which is one of your columns, I believe it's still on there, all right, then that might show us where there's a cultural problem in a school. So pairing that school with someone who has great results on the TEL survey would bring together some areas that need to be addressed in areas of weakness in some schools with a leader who has that strong capability. Also looking at the achievement data in reading and math, and the data across the board, where are those trends that we need to partner different schools? And that would be one of the components we use to develop the networks that would be under these lead principals.
And let me just add, with any performance evaluation system or accountability system, the primary goal is about getting better, making improvement. So we want a system that does provide very specific feedback in those individual measures. But also decisions need to be made looking at trend data over time, as Alan and Jay pointed out. We want to, you know, there are going to be schools that, it's not a perfectly leveled playing field when you look at these measures. Like I said, some measures are going to be more correlated with socioeconomic status. However, those measures that are correlated are also very critical measures and are part of this for a reason. But we have primarily put the greatest emphasis on the things that can be controlled within the school, the growth and progress piece. But we do need to look at it piece by piece and look at multiple measures over time. Now, the process that we've used to, the first step is to identify what are the metrics that are important. And we did look at, in addition to the work that Alan has been involved with in terms of performance management, we've looked at what's going on with other districts and other states across the country. And you'll find a lot of similarities with, in terms of the big picture, in terms of looking at achievement, looking at growth, looking at school culture, looking at college and career readiness. All of these things are common measures, the achievement gap. And we have components of those. Now, how we measure in Tennessee may vary a little bit. We actually have some advantages over a lot of states with some of the longitudinal systems that are in place. But we feel that it's a pretty consistent approach to what's happened elsewhere. We involved a lot of stakeholders, including the groups that Alan worked with. We've shared this with principals and a small number of teachers. We've got some feedback. And I'll say, most of the feedback I've received has been very positive. I think people just want to know what the system is, what the metrics are that we look at. Now, how we use this and over time, you know, having that trust in the measures, you know, validity is all about what we do with the data and the decisions we make. But I think the measures that we have in place are pretty well agreed on and have been used for the most part in Tennessee. There probably will be some fine tuning and other metrics that we look at over time that I think, you know, it's going to be minor changes in the future. After we identify the measures, then we have to prioritize or weight those. What percentage of the system do they count? And as I indicated, there's a larger emphasis on the growth or progress pieces. But we have to define the specific measures, the specific scales we're using. We refer to performance scales in here. What's the minimum value that we accept to assign any points to a school for a given measure? What's the maximum number that we use that any school above that will get 100 percent of the points? And we'll look at some specific examples. But we did go with a point system. And for the higher particular measures weighted, the more points that a school can obtain using that. But in total, when you add across all the measures, the range of total points is going to be 0 to 100. Now, this graph shows kind of the large indicators. Academic progress, which is value-added growth, increasing achievement levels account for half of this. And these are measures that are typically less correlated with socioeconomic status. We have college readiness and attainment measures. Attainment is a term that's used sometimes by the state as well to refer to one-time measures of achievement, not growth measures, but on a given day in April or May when these students take the test, what percentage reach a high level of performance. Proficiency on a TCAP test, a 21 on an ACT exam, which is a common indicator for college readiness. We're using school projection data on the ACT. Tina will talk about that. But we're trying to tie college readiness across all of our tiers to look at how well we're preparing students. We have an achievement gap measure. It's a little different from what the state uses, and we'll talk about the differences. We think it's a little more rigorous than the state model. And a school culture measure, which right now, we only have one piece of the puzzle. The TEL survey was mentioned. That's a survey of our teachers, our educators, to look at the culture within the building. We're getting ready next week to start administration of Tripod's student survey to start collecting data from students to get the student voice. And I hope within the next year, we'll be able to add a parent survey piece to this. And all three of those would contribute 15 percent. Now, we're going to go into some of the specific measures. What you have on this chart are the K-8 measures. We'll look at high school measures in a minute, but the K-8 measures in the high school are very similar in a lot of ways, but there are a few distinctions. Typically, when you see TCAP referenced here in K-8, you're going to have an equivalent with the end-of-course exams at the high school level. There are two academic progress measures, and the NCE gain and the achievement level increase. The numbers you see are the minimum and maximum values on our performance scale. Anything below the minimum is going to get zero points. Anything at the maximum or higher is going to give you 100 percent of the possible points for that measure. What we tried to do was to identify a scale that was broad enough to distinguish across all of our schools. And we have tremendous variation on almost any performance measure you can identify from top to bottom. But we wanted it to be broad enough to distinguish among those, but not so broad that we lose sight of important differences that occur where most of our schools are focused. And if you want to get into the detail when we move on to specific measures, we can look at that. We have a column that talks about the percent of the variation in these measures that can be accounted for by socioeconomic status, particularly free reduced lunch statistics. So you see there's a 0 percent correlation that we found with our free reduced lunch statistics and our TVOS gains, our value-added gains. However, you'll see other measures that are typically one-time measures, like what percent of students score proficient, that are pretty highly correlated with free reduced lunch. Again, those aren't weighted quite as heavily, but they are important measures. The weights are shown in the last column. They will add up to 100 percent across all measures. But you can see on the far right, those top two add up to 50 percent progress, then we get into attainment gap and culture.
Dr. Changus, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Down at the bottom one, where we're talking about school culture, you said that this year we'll have the student perceptions roll out.
Yes, we're doing the Tripod's survey this coming month.
Will those go to each student, or is there a selection process, or?
The attempt is to have all A-12 students. Tina's been working with Tripod on this.
Actually, the unit of analysis on the Tripod survey is the teacher. So each teacher in the district, K through 12, will be administering to one of his or her classes. So each student will take the survey once or occasionally more than once. So they have their homeroom teacher and a related arts teacher, or an algebra teacher and, you know, a band teacher, or something like that. It measures classroom climate, but it also measures school climate, so.
And that's just K through eight?
K through 12.
Oh, K through 12, okay.
So we're working very hard on that right now.
But it is a survey that will touch every student at least once.
It will touch every student at least once.
Okay. And then, Dr. Changus, you mentioned that the parental test will be rolling out possibly next year.
Well, let me, we hope to have a parent survey in place for next year. That hasn't been finalized yet, and we've been looking at different measures, but that's our hope, and that's still to be determined.
Tina, would you, or Paul, would you give the background on the student, the Tripod survey, where that comes from, what we're getting at?
Sure. The Tripod survey was developed about, I can give you a big spiel because I've been talking about it a lot. It was developed about 10 years ago by a gentleman named Ron Ferguson, who works mainly on achievement gaps issues. But the survey is not meant to measure that. There's seven major components of the classroom and school experience that are measured, like the extent to which students feel cared for, the level of control that a teacher might have in a classroom, which is very highly correlated with value-added. Not the TVOS that we have, but a different type of value-added. We expect that would hold with our particular method of calculation. As well as challenge, so what's often called academic press. Both the control and the academic press measures are very highly, more correlated than principal observations, as a matter of fact, with student outcomes. But there's also just a general school climate measure as well. And it was part of the Measuring Effective Teaching Project done by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. So it has been very extensively tested in this country. Memphis uses it, as well as many other districts, and it's even been used outside the country. So it's a very well-validated instrument, and I think will give very useful feedback. It's in a, we're doing a pilot of it this spring in partnership with the state. It's not an inexpensive survey to administer, and it may end up being part of a teacher evaluation system in the future. We're not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
It is one we had been looking at, but the cost was prohibitive. So we were real excited that the state made that opportunity available to us this year.
I have a question about the parents. What are the obstacles right now that you see to being able to commit to having a parent survey to use?
Well, cost is one factor, but we've been looking at a number of parent surveys in recent years. And we have a number of groups that work with us through Alignment National and other entities that have different recommendations. So I think part of it is finding consensus around one instrument, but I think we're at a point now that we're ready. Even though we didn't have the particular assessment in place, we wanted to put a placeholder in our system because we think that voice is important. So, you know, right now, it's more about the cost and logistics. But I think there are different ways we can do this that would work in hopefully a fairly efficient manner cost-wise. Yeah.
Many of our schools are actually going ahead right now and using a survey that Harvard recently developed. Jenny, Jenny's last name, Jenny Poobo Walker, has made this available to all of our schools through our office. And so a lot of them are using it. Right now, every school does survey their parents, but they have different needs for, say, Title I dollars and things like that. So we have not centralized that collection, but the data are being collected. And that is a very strong candidate for what we end up using. It's a very well-designed survey, and it will be piloted this year.
Yeah. Since you asked, Ms. Gentry, about the challenge or obstacles, one of the obstacles has been that there have been requirements that are outside of our control. And we know that there's some survey fatigue out there among schools. We didn't want it to be one more thing on top of what they're already doing. But a number of schools have also come to us asking for a good valid measure that we can use. And so hopefully, we're close to that point, and we think this offers promise.
Could I have one more question about that?
Yes.
Is each parent being surveyed, or is there a selection process to that piece as well?
Well, right now.
Those schools that are?
Right now, every school, I think it's done in different ways in different schools. I've been in, I've worked with schools that do make an attempt to survey every parent. Now, whether everything is turned in is another story, but, you know, there's paper options, there are online options, and you try to give multiple opportunities. But there have been some other situations where it's been grade-specific, or it's been a sample of students. That's the thing. It hasn't been systematic across the district. It's been several years since we had, I think we had a couple of years, 2003, 2004, that we were doing some district-wide parent surveying, but it was a pretty significant cost at that time.
Thank you.
The, going into each of the measures just in a little more detail. With value-added, all of these measures that have an asterisk by them, our progress measures, for instance, we're focusing on reading, language arts, mathematics and science. We're not including TCAP social studies at this time because it's still based on the old state standards and has not been updated. But those are the three subject areas that the state accountability system holds us accountable for. When the standards are updated for social studies, we would hope to add that. So we're talking about one-year gains for value-added, and that's growth that's following a cohort of students over time. The mean achievement level increase is one of the more complex measures that we have because rather than just take the percent proficient in advance, which is the state measure, we wanted to go into a little more depth. measure, we wanted to go into a little more depth. There's important growth that occurs on the lower end and the upper end of the achievement scale. Students moving, and you've got a slide here that illustrates an example that I'll talk about in a minute, but we have students that move from proficient to advanced, from below basic to basic, but they stay in the same category if all you're looking at is whether they've met that threshold of proficient or not. And we think that's important growth, and it also correlates more closely with our value-added approach. In this particular example, we have two schools, A and B, that are identical in 2011 in terms of the percent of students at each achievement level. And this could be TCAP, or it could be end-of-course at the high school level. 10 percent advanced, 20 percent proficient, 30 percent basic, 40 percent below basic. When you look at 2012, however, there's a pretty significant change between what happens in the two schools. In School A, there's continuous growth across the levels. Students are moving up from proficient to advanced, a 2 percent increase. Students, another 2 percent, have moved from basic to proficient, to keep proficient at the same number, and another 2 percent have moved from below basic to basic. But everything is in an upward direction, and if you add those three growth measures that I have there, those arrows, that adds up to 6 percent of students moving up in a year, one level. In the second example, School B, the percent of students moving from basic to proficient is the same, 2 percent, so the overall percent proficient in advanced is identical to School A. But you also have students moving the wrong direction on the high end, from advanced to proficient, 2 percent, from basic to below basic, 4 percent. And when you add those three numbers in the middle, the minus 2, the plus 2, and the minus 4, you have a net 4 percent loss in terms of achievement. Now, this is simplified, this example, but we have real-case situations that we observe. Not a lot, but we have some situations where that's occurred among our schools. And it could be because we're narrowly focused on those kids around the proficient level. There could be other factors going on, but we feel that a better picture of what's going on is to look at all of this movement and to summarize that. While it's a little different from the state measure, it does correlate well, but we feel it goes beyond, and we've actually had conversations with the state about this. They like the model we're using and have talked about piloting it in Tennessee. Yeah, I'll just, I do have an example if we need to go into more detail, but let me say too that, and we'll look at this when we get into the school-level data piece, but we set targets for each school that vary a little bit based on where they were previously. If you're already, if you have a certain percentage of students who are already advanced, we know they're not going to make improvement in terms of growth, so you're not going to be penalized for that, in this particular case, for that 10 percent who are already advanced. But we do expect growth for the remaining students. But the greatest growth should occur for our lowest-achieving students, our below-basic students, we have the highest expectation of movement there, than our basic students and our proficient students. So we individualize our targets for each school based on where they are previously. The state is actually doing something similar with their measures of percent proficient in advanced. They're looking at what percent are below, and the greater that number, the greater the target. If we're ever going to get students where they need to be in terms of grade-level performance in a relatively short period of time, we have to have the greatest gains for those who are the furthest behind. But if you have questions about that, we can look at a specific example a little later. I'm going to turn to Dr. Tina for the next one.
I'm going to talk a little bit right now about the 30 percent of the model that is based on attainment. As Dr. Changus mentioned, this is tests on a given day for graduation rate in the case of high schools. We did choose to focus most heavily on growth, because the state's accountability system, there's two actually overlapping accountability systems, but the year-to-year accountability system is actually 100 percent growth. We didn't feel like that captured everything that we wanted to capture in an accountability framework, and we wanted to focus on college and career readiness from the get-go. So, and we, you know, at a certain point, it doesn't matter how much you grow, as long, you know, you have to actually get there. So this is the getting there part of the equation. The first thing that we're going to look at is the simple percent of students who are proficient or advanced. So if you were at a high-performing school, even if your numbers of, your percent of proficient and advanced went down, but they were very high, you'd score well in this category. This is the one that we probably all know and have our various opinions about. I do want to point out how highly correlated this is with free reduced, with SES. This is not just in our district, but this kind of thing is associated with SES. And what you'll see for this third, 71 and 73 percent of the variation is accounted for. What that means on the ground is if you ranked schools just simply by the percent of free-reduced lunch, you'd get 71 percent of them right, just having that information, you know, and we don't want that, but, you know, that's the nature of this beast.
That's a pattern we're trying to change.
That's a pattern we're trying to change, but we also want to acknowledge that it exists. So it isn't a level playing field for all of our schools, you know, yet we do expect and want to get every one of our schools, regardless of the population, to these high levels here, and some do. We have some schools that are very high free-reduced lunch and who do very well in this category. The second thing that you'll see in this is the, for K-8, is the percentage of students who are projected to be 21 or above, excuse me, on the ACT. I'm going to say a few things about this. The first is that we chose this rather than, say, the explore at the eighth grade, because for one thing, it's consistent from third grade, fourth grade, all the way to eighth grade, and we want to get both the language of the ACT out there, you know, all the way down into the elementary grades, and also call attention to the fact that we have a large number of students who are not projected to be 21 or above on the ACT. In fact, that's statewide. When you look at a student who's projected to be 21, pretty much exactly, they're at the 67th percentile in the state. So that means 2/3 of the people in the state, the students in the state are not meeting that benchmark, not projected to meet that benchmark. We want to break that pattern early, and we thought that getting the data out there early would be the best way to accomplish that. Because oftentimes, in elementary and middle school, I mean, teachers know that what they're doing is important, but they don't necessarily think about what the long-term effect is. And Dr. Changus looked at how much of the variation was due to third grade, like if you have a third grade, if you want to say what that you've found.
Over half the variation, over half the variation in ACT scores. We followed a cohort from third grade all the way through senior year in high school. The same students over time, and over half the variation in their ACT scores was accounted for by their third-grade TCAP score. So that tells you those tendencies are hard to break, and that pattern is set early on.
And we do have very good, solid, value-added scores for high school ACT. So, you know, taking the students that we have and moving them up the line, even though they haven't gotten to where we want to get them, they are going well beyond what they were expected to do, based on their own long histories of data.
Did you guys have any capacity within that tracking to look at teacher quality?
We, for one, we have not had the data electronically until this past year on value-added, individual value-added scores, so not in terms of any formal state manner. And the other issue is just identifying, tying students to teachers historically has been a challenge. We have a process that we use for value-added purposes that's an online application the state provides, but we, even though our teachers do those links, we have not had that data electronically historically. With our new student information system, we should be able to do that in the future, but bottom line is no. And let me just add, when we talk about projections to the ACT, a lot of assumptions have to be made, because we don't know what teachers those kids are going to have in the future. When those projections are made, and that's a value-added process that's conducted by the state and its vendor, they make assumptions that those students will have teachers who are average in terms of their effectiveness from here on in the future. So again, what we're trying to do is to change those trajectories with more effective teaching.
The next part of the model has a fairly low weight, because we're really focused on getting all students moved forward, but we did want to put an achievement gap measure in here. This is another fairly complicated formula, and I'm not going to go into the entire formula, but I did, we modeled this after the state's achievement gap weighting, but it does have some differences. So basically, we are looking in this achievement gap for math, reading, and science, and by the way, all of these are math, reading, and science except the ACT. We're looking at the gaps between certain subgroups, free-reduced lunch against non-free-reduced lunch, EL against non-EL, special ed or students with disabilities against students who don't have disabilities. And then there's something called, this is a state term, the racial/ethnic subgroup, which includes African-American or Black, Hispanic, and Native American students as compared to all. And we sum all of these achievement gaps up and divide it to get an index. So the way the state achievement gap works is that those gaps are calculated within a school. So if a school has a very high-performing socio-economically high group, and the low socioeconomic group doesn't do well, they get dinged for having an achievement gap. And that's regardless of how their lower-performing group actually does. We didn't like that, because some of our schools ended up not having an achievement gap calculated, because they were either 100 percent white and, you know, very little bit of diversity there, or because they were 100 percent economically disadvantaged. So they didn't have, they didn't have anybody to have a gap with. So we went ahead and chose to do it, that we expect our FRL students to do as well as our non-FRL students at the district level, not at the school level. So what that ended up doing at the school level was that, let's say somebody had 20 percent of their economically disadvantaged students being proficient or advanced, but their non-economically disadvantaged students did the same thing, or they didn't have them, they had no gap. And some of the schools who are actually now focus schools, every subgroup that they had outperformed the district and the state. We decided we wanted to reward that, not penalize it, because, you know, yes, they have a gap that they need to work on within that school, but they still are doing better than everybody else is, you know, with that group. So that's one difference. This is a one-year measure, so it's sensitive to year-to-year change. The state uses three years, and we also moved the minimum N. The state uses 30, so if you don't have, say, 30 non-economically disadvantaged students, you don't get a gap. We moved that down to 10, because every one of these students counts for us. And I'd be happy to go into how that measure is calculated, but it's a page-long of calculation.
We do have that documentation available, but, you know, that's probably a level of detail we don't need right now.
Thank you.
And even this level of detail is not probably what, you know, we're going to put, this is not the public face of this system. This is the guts of the system that you're seeing now. We're going to be working on how to display this data in a little more user-friendly fashion. Dr. Changus already mentioned the TEL survey, which we just finished, and we actually had a higher percentage rate than the state responding. We ended up with about 82 percent of our educators responding to this. This measures working conditions at the school, things like safety and support, the availability of school-based professional development. And when we calculated this measure, we took out any questions that were not in the school's control, like the availability of state assessment data is, you know, is timely. They don't have, you know, the school doesn't have any control over that. So we took all of those questions out and figured out how to, you know, how to make an interval. And again, this is only 5 percent, but we hope that, you know, between these three measures, we'll have 15 percent. There was quite a bit of discussion at the principal level about this. Some wanted way more devoted to culture, some wanted way less, because you can actually dip, if you're a new principal and go into a school and make a lot of changes, you can become unpopular, even if they're good changes. So we wanted to keep it out there, but still minimal in impact. And we already talked about the student perception survey and the parent perception survey.
And those numbers you see for the educator perception, those are average scores on our 1 to 4 scale on interview survey. We now, this was the third administration of the TEL. We don't have the newest data back. It comes later this spring, but what you're seeing, what you're going to see tonight again is the 2011-12 data.
Okay, obviously, we don't have 100 points right now. We have 90, so we divided the total points, divided by the total number of points that they could have had, to come up with this. So everything that's in there is slightly, you know, it may be 27 percent instead of 25 percent for the T-Voss, for instance, but we will be fixing that very soon, we hope. The high school performance measures are very similar. We tried to keep it roughly the same with 50, 30, 5, and 15.
I'm sorry, before we move on to high school, is there a way that you could just walk us across this chart, just kind of column by column, and tell us exactly how to interpret this?
Sure.
We are going to get to that, but if you would like to do that now, we can, but we will be happy to come back to these slides, but we are going to walk through that.
Okay.
The major difference for high school is that obviously, we don't need to use projections for 21. We're using the actual percentage of students who hit 21 or better on the ACT. And there's also, it's weighted slightly lower than it is at K, at grades four and grades eight, because we also have the percent of students graduating on time with a regular diploma. And this, we use the absolute value. The state uses growth as its measure, unless you're really low. And we kept it with an absolute, because we want to get all of our schools up to that 90 percent mark or higher. And with that, I believe we're going to move on.
Yeah, we're getting close to digging into the school data, and we will come back to any of these, because I know once we get into the school data, that takes on a life of its own, and we'll be there in a while. I'm not going to spend much time on this slide, because we've covered the key points, but again, there's a reason we chose to use some measures that are a little different from the state approach. The state model is fine, but there are some enhancements that we think we've made. We talked about looking at achievement levels across all of the span of achievement levels and the progress that occurs. We talked about adding college readiness. We have ACT measures that are not part of the state system currently, but obviously, they are reported as part of our, as part of our report card. As Tina mentioned, we want to hold schools accountable for all of their subgroups, regardless of whether they have a large comparison group, or whether there's a gap because they're, no one's performing particularly well. And finally, we did things at culture piece. Having the voice of teachers, students, and parents is important. Now, with regard to the school-level data you're going to see, we... Now, with regard to the school-level data you're going to see, we have performance categories that, we've identified five, and we spent time debating what these labels should be called. We are using excelling as our top category, achieving, satisfactory, review, and target. And as you'll see, everything is color-coded. We'll talk about that a little bit more. But these are the score ranges that we are currently using for each of these measures. Any composite score, total points of 65 or higher is going to be excelling. Achieving is 55 to anything up to just under 65. So, and I can talk in more detail about how these scales were established, but we used a model that's often used by teachers and normative grading approaches with certain percentages of students expected to be an A, B, or C, but we're using it with regard to schools. The state identifies 10% of schools as reward schools, 5% as priority. Our model has, that we started with, has roughly 10% in the top group, 5% in the bottom. But we started with that, but we also made adjustments when we looked at state report card information and what criteria are used by the state. We made some tweaks to that, but the general approach was to have a certain percentage of schools initially in each category, but we don't want it to be a quota system. We want to set standards that hold up over time and schools, you know, an unlimited numbers, so schools can move up or down, and that's one of the things we're looking at in terms of that movement right now. But we also define measures for, or ranges for each measure, so we can provide that diagnostic feedback on how we're doing in terms of growth or college readiness and so forth.
Before you move from that slide, I'm just curious about how some of these metrics were weighted, and I'll, I'd love to dive into the high school ACT 21+. You know, so much of the vision that we've set as a board has talked about that we will deliver, that we will graduate children with the skills necessary to succeed in life, college, right? And we've defined that, I think, as the minimum score necessary is a 21 on the ACT, broadly speaking. So I'm wondering if you're satisfied with 20%, right? You've got, 20% is a satisfactory score. I'm just wondering, was there much discussion internally before you presented this to us to make high school ACT 21+, those metrics the same as the graduation rate? That I'd be satisfied if we had 70%, personally, and I don't know how my colleagues feel about this. I don't know if you're really satisfied with 20%. I'm not.
Yeah.
I mean, does anybody want to engage in that conversation at the board level? And I'm curious how you came up with 20% as a satisfactory number.
Well, and let me, again, let me go back to the fact that we looked at distributions of data, and we're talking about actual ACT scores, and we're talking about projections to the ACT. And the reality is, as Tina mentioned, there are about a third of Tennessee students who are hitting a 21, which is a much lower number than, for instance, a graduation rate, the actual.
And I think what our expectation and where our board would be satisfied, and that's the question I have, is we talk about setting a goal or moonshot with the resolution or the proposal you may bring at the next board meeting. I'm not satisfied with the 20. I don't know if you really are, right? I don't care what the other districts are doing. My expectation is we're going to exceed, we're going to be the best.
Yeah. Well, I'll add the fact that right now...
And I know it's hard.
Yeah. And we went back, there were some measures, if we had just looked at the data, there are some measures where we would actually have some lower scores than you're seeing here to hit those kinds of distributions that were in our original model that we said, no, we can't go that way. But our average, and we looked at fourth grade and eighth grade for our ACT projections, and the numbers are in the, what, 15% range in terms of the kids projected to be a 21. So as low as 20% is, it's actually higher right now than our district average. And that, so it's the reality of where we currently are. I hope this is something that evolves over time, and as we see improvement, that these measures change. And certainly, they're open for discussion at this point. But we wanted something that discriminates among our schools in terms of relative performance in terms of where we are. The labels, you know, are something that may or may not fit for some of these measures, and certainly, we can talk about that. But the reality is that most of our schools right now in K-8 are not hitting that.
No, and I get the reality, but I think about as we set the vision and the mission, and we try to give our director direction, if we feel satisfied with a 20, I'm just, I want to know that.
So I think you hit the nail on the head with your last statement or second to last statement, is let's not get caught up on the labels for those categories. So it's not really, I don't think the intention in putting satisfactory at the top of that, I think what you're looking at is a bell curve distribution of scores.
Yeah.
And so we slice them, like you would do a bell curve, and you've got the lower than that, and then the one in the middle, and then the other two on the right-hand side. So what you're looking at is a bell curve distribution of what we're seeing today. So maybe we have to figure out how we continue the conversation and separate that label of satisfactory from an acceptable level of performance by our teachers and our students. So I think that's what we have to do to be able to continue this discussion, so that we don't get caught up in believing that that's a goal for anybody. It's where you happen to land in this distribution of scores.
That's well stated. We looked at using letter grades, and you know, you could say that that's a C.
We call it a C-, if it looks better.
But the reality is, it's the minimum to get to that middle category, whatever we call that. It's not going to get you into the achieving and excelling that we're looking at as a goal for all of our schools, but it is, you know, it is a slice of where we currently are. I'll also mention that there were, you know, when we looked at setting our scales for each of these measures, there were some situations where we had to make determinations on where to assign points, what was the minimum value. And to be honest, there are some numbers right now that are not satisfactory, that still will start to get you a percentage of points, but they won't get you very far up the scale. But the reason we include those is to discriminate from schools that are significantly below that. We need some way to distinguish. So there are limitations with the scales we have, and then putting labels on them is a concern. But, you know, is 20% acceptable? Certainly not. But if you look at our data, that, we have a long way to go. And I do, and again, I said at the very beginning, the ultimate goal is about improvement, and I hope we can raise the bar. We saw about a six-point increase on average from 2011 to 2012 in the, per K-8 data that we just started analyzing, the 2011. So as those numbers go up, I hope our scale in the near future can be adjusted on some of these measures.
Could I say a quick thing? So part of this is about getting there. And, you know, our goal is every student 21 or above. That's a characteristic of the graduate that's been set. This is language that we've kind of got in some internal documents with regard to policy implications, and see if this captures a little bit. So this would be satisfactory. Nothing is celebrated here. Schools should be connected more purposefully with resources to accelerate an upward trajectory. Autonomy strikes a balance with district involvement. So that's kind of the flavor of what satisfactory is, as we've talked about it to this point, though that's not final, if that's close.
No, I think that is helpful.
Okay, so just very quickly, I mentioned that we saw an increase in scores from 2011. We haven't finished analyzing the high school data, and we still need to do some checks on the 2011 K-8. We haven't finished the 2011 high school analysis, which means looking at what happened in 2010 as well as 2011 to look at growth. But one of the concerns is, you know, will this show change over time, and how are we moving over time? So just a preliminary count, these are the schools that had data over a two-year period, both years. We did see an increase in the number of schools in K-8 that are excelling, and also the number that are achieving, and a decrease in the number of target and review. But we have schools moving in both directions and fairly significantly in terms of number. So there is, there does seem to be some sensitivity to one-year change. We broke that down to look at the correlations on individual measures. And what we see is there's a moderate correlation when you look at the overall scores of two years, but it's only moderate. There's still quite a bit of variation that's occurring. Some of the measures are extremely consistent in terms of relationship correlation. One is a perfect correlation. We have a .96 for percent proficient and advanced, a .89 for achievement gap. Those are, again, one-time measures that are highly correlated with free reduced lunch. They're more stable, they're harder to change in one year. We have a moderate relationship with value-added gain or T-VAS. We were a little surprised that there was no correlation on the achievement level increase from one year to the next. And we're digging into that a little bit more. It may mean that it's, you make a big jump one year, it's hard to sustain that. That's looking at the percent of kids who move up and down across all your grades. Those aren't always the same kids. In a middle school, you will have a new group of fifth graders each year, you'll lose some fifth graders. So it's not a strict cohort, but typically, the populations are pretty consistent. But there are some schools that will have some population changes, especially as zoning changes occur. And we do want to look at that in terms of making some exceptions within situations where there has been a tremendous zoning change. But that's one that we're a little curious about. But we also know that in 2011, that was the second year of implementation of the new state standard, and it could be that we took such a hit in 2010 with that implementation that we have some spurious gains that occurred that first year. But overall, there is a moderate correlation from one year to the next. And that brings us up to the school-level data that you have. On the chart, we have some de-identified school information. You have the actual school information here, but it's the same data. But I'm just going to look at the columns right now, and let's go through this a little bit. So after the number of students tested, and those, again, everything we're looking at in terms of test performance is going to be reading, language arts, math, and science. So the average number of students tested, and then their average increase across achievement levels. And what you have is the mean increase. With regard to achievement level, we've converted everything to a 100 to 400 scale, 400 being advanced, 300 proficient, 200 basic, 100 below basic. So that when we look at our average gains, and we see, for instance, an 18.3 on a school, that first number, that means on average, we, 18, across all kids, 18.3% of students on the net moved up one level. And that means some went down, some went up, but the net was gained with an 18.3% of kids. Now, a goal, as I mentioned, was established for each school based on their prior history, and it was actually a pretty rigorous goal. It meant 50% of your below-basic students moving up a level, 40% of your basic, and 30% of your proficient in a year.
Moving up a level, going from below-basic to basic, and basic to proficient, proficient to advanced?
Right.
Okay. I mean, you're going to have to really unpack this for us in a much deeper way, if you don't mind.
Yeah. It's 50% of your below-basic moving up to basic, 40% basic to proficient, 30% proficient to advanced. And again, we do have documentation that we've been putting together for our schools. We're still unrolling this and documenting because there's a lot involved in these processes. And let me say too, that right now, this is across subject areas. Our ultimate goal in reporting is going to be for schools to be able to drill down and see, this type of data is for any specific subject. If they have an issue with their achievement level increase, is it reading, is it math, is it science? Is it a particular grade level? Is it a particular subgroup? We want this to go into our data warehouse, so we have that level of detail, but this is still kind of big picture.
I just want to say that this is, you know, an aspirational goal, and I just want to point out how much more rarest this is than our state-level AMOs. This is, and some of our schools actually made this kind of growth. It is, you know, it is amazing growth if you can get 90% of these points. You know, we're talking 5% growth about for the state-level AMOs, and this is just much, much higher bar.
Yeah, that 4% or 5% the state is setting would be, you know, for one group of kids getting over the proficient hurdle, but to do that across all of these groups is pretty So we have a goal that's established, and then we have a percent, you know, the percentage of points that's assigned is kind of the bottom line in terms of what you see on assigning points here. 25% of the points are coming from the achievement level increase. So if the school got 100% of its points, they would get 25 points added toward that first column, with a little bit of adjustment, given the fact that we have a couple of missing data points. But we're, we will be working, and we're still going to be, as I said, documenting this, and we have a lot of training to do with our schools in terms of how these are calculated. But we do feel that setting goals is, you know, kind of tentative right now. What we've used for 2013, however, is what it would take to reach your goal of, reach 65% of the possible points for next year. And by getting to 65%, that's kind of the minimum to reach excelling. That still becomes a pretty large increase, much greater typically than we see with any of the state accountability measures.
Where are the goals coming from again?
This goal, for instance, for the achievement level increase, is what it would take to get to 65% of the possible points for that measure, for achievement level increase. 65 is the minimum to reach the excelling category. So it puts you on track for reaching excelling. And this is kind of a first step at setting goals. We still have some work to do to look at trends over time. As Tina said, these tend to be more aspirational, but we do have schools making these kinds of things.
And the percent of points is a function of what again?
It's looking at what, it looks at your increase and your goal, but then those numbers are put on a scale, we talked about a performance scale, and I could walk through it, it might be worthwhile to walk through a very specific example with regard to how this is established. Let me go ahead and jump ahead to some slides for a second. Because I...
I don't understand that page either.
It has the formulas in here.
Is the realistic goal?
Yes.
Realistic goal.
And I know this is difficult to read, but let me give you the general idea. What we have to first do for the achievement level increase is to figure out what your score is on this 100 to 400 scale. So basically, look at your performance on that scale. But we set a goal, which I mentioned, which is to multiply the percent of students who are advanced by zero, because we know they can't go anywhere, but proficient by 30%, basic by 40%, below basic by 50%. And I can enlarge that. So... So we set a goal for each school based on their prior year of data. And that becomes the, the target to, to reach 100%. But then, for each year, we compute their average score on the 100 to 400 scale. We just convert, you know, an advanced to, for every child, an advanced score becomes a 400, a proficient a 300, a basic a 200, below basic a 100. So that puts it on that 100 to 400 scale. Now, we can, we subtract the 2012 average from the 2000, I'm sorry, the 2011 from the 2012 to get their increase on that measure. So a 25.36 means that on net, 25% of kids moved up a level in a year. But then, that is taken as a percentage of the goal that was established for students, for the school. Their goal, we saw earlier, based on their previous performance, was a 34. We're moving them up to a 25. We've moved them up 25. That's about almost three-fourths of the goal, 73.4%. But then, our scale is defined, our performance scale is a minus 30 to 100 in terms of that percentage of increase. Because we have a lot of schools that didn't hit 0%. They had negative losses. So the minimum value to get any percentage of points is a minus 30 on this scale. That's, again, not an acceptable score, but it means to get any recognition that you're doing better than some other schools that had even lower performance, that would, that would get you some amount of points. But remember, even getting a few points is going to still keep you in the, in the bottom category.
It's like the difference between getting an F with a 5 out of 100 and an F with a 60 out of 100. You know, you want to differentiate a little bit within each category.
It's still low performance, but it's trying to discriminate. So we, we basically look at your relative position on that minus 30 to 100 scale, and the further you are along that, you're going to, you're going to receive points. Your increase is going to, we're going, from that, we're going to subtract the scale minimum of minus 30, and that's over a 130-point range. So you ultimately have received 79% of the points available. That's multiplied by the possible number of points, in this case, 25, and you get almost 20 points. But it's, it's, for every measure, it's a situation of looking at where we are in terms of the goal that's established on that scale, that performance scale. From the minimum to the maximum, where do we fall along that line? I'm going to go back to the PowerPoint in another slide that, that can illustrate that a little differently. With regard to value-added, our value-added scale was set at from negative 5 to 12, our performance scale. So a school that had a 4.7, that means they're 9.7 units above that minimum value. But the total range of that scale from minus 5 to 12 is 17 points. So that 9.7 is divided by 17. For every measure, we look at where you are between the minimum and maximum on that scale, and it compute a simple percentage, and that's what's used to, to get the percentage of the possible points. That's kind of the visual of that. Those scales, again, as I mentioned earlier, were set in such a way that we want to look at, at a scale that's, that includes most of our schools, 95% of them at least, but not so wide that it, we lose sight of important increments that occur along the way. I'm not sure, I'm sure there's still questions. Does that help somewhat, or we, with regard to that? I know you have to work through examples to, with, with real data, and we can come back to that. That's the kind of thing, the training that we're going to be doing with our schools. We've started working with our data coaches on those measures, but you have to, you have to look at it with, with actual school data. But hopefully you get the concept. Our next set of numbers are the value-added gains. And for K-8, it's a mean-normal curve equivalent score. That's the basic unit that the state uses, NCEs. Essentially, when you see a 9.33 NCE, on, on average, you could say that that's a nine-per percentile gain. The state uses NCEs because it's what we call an equal interval scale, scale that can be averaged. But 0 is kind of the, the minimum state target in terms of performance. It means that your students have maintained their relative ranking compared to other Tennessee students. But our, our goals are obviously much higher than that. And to get 65% of the points next year, schools need to be at a six, about a six NCE gain. But that gain translates to a percentage of points. And again, using that same idea that there's a 17-point range, and anywhere between that minus 5 and 12 is going to get you a certain percentage of those points. So we have two growth or progress measures. Those are followed by a, a set of achievement measures. The percent of students who are proficient or advanced, and that's on our TCAP, reading, math, science, reading, math, language arts and science. For high schools on end-to-course, it's our Algebra I and English II currently, but we will be expanding on those to include our other English subjects and our, actually, we, we also have Biology I in the, the equation currently. But we will add Algebra I, I'm sorry, Algebra II, English I, and English III in the future. We have an achievement gap measure, and Tina talked about it in, in general terms, but a negative number here means that your traditionally lower-performing subgroup, for instance, your economically disadvantaged students, have actually outperformed the district's non-economically disadvantaged group on average. So those, those mean you not only don't have a, you have a gap, but it's actually in favor of your disadvantaged students compared to the district average. That rewards schools that, as Tina mentioned, that have high performance for all of their subgroups that exceed the district average. The wider, when you get to the, a positive number, this is the one scale where a positive number is not what we want. You're going to, you're going to get 100% of the points for having a 0 or a negative number here. But you're going to lose points as the number goes above 0. So again, for every measure, you see a percentage of points. And then we get into the Tell Tennessee survey, your average, your average score for all the teachers who responded in your building on that 1 to 4 survey scale, and then the percentage of points earned. And then the ACT data, which for K-8 schools is, again, projections at either grade four or grade eight to the 21 on the ACT. And as we go through those pages, you see a lot of numbers that are, that are low. And, and getting back to the concern about those category labels, again, the, our categories are right now are based on where our schools are. At the high school level, you also have the graduation rate data. So I know it's a lot of data, and I'll go ahead and try to address specific questions.
I'm still confused on the goals. So, and I understand it's based on a formula that's complex and I'm not, that I'm not fully understanding, but I was wondering if you could just sort of put, put that into words. Sort of, so like, this 8.1 for the first school, School A is, it's obviously not a percentage, so School A is expected to...
Yeah. The, okay, let me make a distinction. We have a 2012 goal that was established that, for each school. That's the goal to get to 100% of points. And it's based on the concept that the lower your previous performance, the greater the gain you have to make. So that's how the goal is established. That's using, you know, the, the expectation 50% of your lowest-performing or, or below-basic students would move up to basic and so forth. That's a, that's almost an aspirational goal, but we do have some schools that, that hit it or come very close. Those are much, much higher than any of the state-identified goals.
So that's, that's a district goal that we're setting here?
These are district goals that were set. That's the, that's what it's, that's what's required to get to 100% of points. This column that we've added here, Dr. Register asked us before we shared this with principals to, to set a goal that's steep, but hopefully obtainable. And so that's actually taking what would be required to hit 100%, but actually taking 65% of that number, which is what it, what's required to get to excelling. Now, let me say, these goals are just to kind of give schools a starting point in terms of performance. You're not, you're, you're judged in this system, if you don't hit your goal, you're still going to get a percentage of points. But in order to reach a certain category, if you want to reach excelling, you're going to have to get 65% of the points across all of these measures. So if you underperform in one category, you're going to have to overperform compared to that 65% in another category. But that's, that, this was a first attempt to give schools some kind of target to shoot for, for this year.
So if you looked at one of our academic magnets that was 100% proficient or advanced, let's say they had 50% proficient and 50% advanced. The goal would be to move 30% of those proficient students to the advanced and let none of the advanced fall back into proficient. And so to get 100% of your points, you would do just that. And so your goal would be targeted around your own school. Does that help clarify, like, so we are looking at individual schools and what their data are, but if you had school that was much more complicated, we have schools that are, you know, 10, you know, that, that get like 10%, 15% are proficient or advanced. And let's say 40% of those were below basic. We would expect a huge chunk of those to move to at least basic. And then another huge chunk, 30, 50, 40, 30, is that it? 40%, you know, we want 40% of them to move up to the next level. And the reason we chose to do it this way is that we want to reward principals who have really hard populations, you know, for getting them to the next level so that we can get them to proficiency. And we don't want to penalize our high-performing schools, you know, because they can't make growth. And we also, you know, and I'll say this as a parent of a kid who I hope will be advanced on his TCAP next year, we want to really discourage the focus on that bubble, you know, right around proficient, because we won't make the progress that we need to make if we don't set targets based on 50, 40, 30. And I, I don't know if that clarified anything or not.
It's a combination goal.
Pardon me?
It's a combination goal. Increase without decreasing.
Yeah. Increase in every category without, without decreasing. And you have a lot more room, you know, to move up if you're low performing. But then again, you know, we have to get those below-basic students to at least basic in one year, you know, from basic to proficient the next, if we're going to make our district goals for state accountability. So this is meant to support our state accountability, but it's much more rigorous. And we, you know, we want the principals and the teachers who are looking at this to keep their eye on all levels of students.
I find this fascinating in looking at your examples here. The reason is because if we look at School D here, it's listed as excelling, but then I look over at the projected ACT score and it's 3.7%. And correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm reading from this is that's the projected number of students in this grouping that is projected to get a 21 or above on the ACT once they get to that test taking.
That's correct. This is a school that's made tremendous growth, has moderately high percent proficient and advanced. But remember, that the target, that to be a 21 on the ACT, you have to be at the 67th percentile among Tennessee students to be projected there. They, they appear to have quite a few students who are probably just below that threshold and maybe in the 50 percentile to 65 percentile range. And, you know, that's a situation, I, I didn't go into the specific colors, but you can tell from that first column, the dark green, it represents the top category, excelling groups across all these measures. The light green is the next category. No color would be that middle group. Then comes the yellow and the bottom group red. The idea being that there are going to be schools that are very strong but, but have relative weaknesses. And if you see a red or a yellow there, that's particularly the case in that, in that excelling or achieving group. So they have areas that are, that are low, but the performance elsewhere overcomes that. That would be though, an area that they need to work on. But we also know that that's a measure that's, that is hard to change, it is highly correlated with free reduced lunch. Typically, what you're going to see as you go down through these pages is a lot of, lot of green toward the top, then you start getting into more the white cells and the middle groups. But, but still, you've got schools that are in that middle group that have green and some that have yellow and red. But there tend to be, you know, some areas where, you have schools that are very consistent across, across all the measures, and then you have some that, that bounce around a bit. But it's the overall picture. And it all gets back to the same issue of trying to find one set of measures, once, one indicator that kind of summarizes what's happening overall. It doesn't mean everything's good, but across the measures, things are, are pretty good or, or on the other end, pretty low.
It's very telling. I, I just find it a little concerning when you have, you know, based on your earlier comment about third-grade achievement scores, pretty much dictating how these students are going to perform on the ACT. This concerns me, this is a middle school and they're still performing very poorly. Well, the projection is a lower projection for the ACT score. So that just kind of concerns me, that we could be doing so well in some categories, but still not being, not getting to that, reaching that goal.
So, exactly. But, but let me, let me, let me make a point that I think you should have seen the principals when they saw this data. You know, we had a roomful of 150 principals together looking at this data, and it's very instructive. I mean, this, that people pore over this data and look at the relative strengths and weaknesses that they have in their schools, and they can dig into that. So it's a, it's a very comprehensive way to look at school performance, school by school. And that's what we're after. And so, so no, there's not a single number or there's not a single rank that this says this school's the best school in the district, or this school's the worst school in the district. That's simplistic. That doesn't work. But this gives data for our principals, for our, for our teachers, for people to look at the relative strengths and weaknesses, and to help them develop a plan of school improvement. And that, that's really, that's really what we say. And it gives us, it gives us a way to evaluate in a comprehensive way schools.
I think it's a very effective tool, because as I'm looking at this and I'm looking at these scores, it's sort of, it's amazing to me how much information is right here on this piece of paper. They can be used, very useful.
And, and, and so, and so let's take it to another level. Sorry. But let me, let me, let me take it to another level. We also know that things happen from year to year. If you just take one snapshot, one picture in time, one year, then you can get, you can have very misleading data. So, so we've got one more year to test, to have three-year average, which is really where you get very reliable data. And if you think about putting those together over time, then we can really see, we can check the improvement... check the improvement or decline in performance, school by school, in a very comprehensive way. So a real red flag when you go from green to yellow to red over time. Very, very positive if you go from red to green or light green in one year. And as we track that way, then you can see how comprehensive a thing this can be. You can also see, and Will, don't feel bad about asking the questions, because he knows every time I look at this, I'm making him explain to me what I'm looking at, because it is a very complicated set of formulas to do this. However, that's why we spent so much time on it. You know, that's why they've spent a half a year and actually longer than that, developing this thing. So we want to make sure before we roll it out, and we feel pretty sure of it, you wouldn't be seeing it tonight, it wouldn't be aired on TV, that we've got some valid measures here.
I mean, I really do applaud the thinking that went into this. I mean, just the idea of using some, you know, stable blended measures to arrive at a composite rating is admirable. I think, I've got just kind of one observation and one question. I think the observation is our challenge now going forward is going to be explaining this to the community. And, you know, what we really need to think about is how we're going to introduce this to parents and students and teachers. And I think it's a communications challenge, Olivia and Meredith and everybody. And the question I've got is that if we're now going to base the district strategy, everything from, you know, resource allocation to staffing and intervention targeting, are we absolutely positive about the validity of this? And I'm not trying to question the precision that went into this. I know there was a lot of thinking that went into this. It just seems like there's just a lot of traps here, starting with the goal setting. And I guess the question I've got here is, do we have a plan or should we have one for getting some external validation as we get experience with this and make refinements? Kind of what's the, you know, are we really challenging our own logic on all of this?
Yeah, and those are great points. And we're still in the validation process. My hope is that, first of all, we get comfortable with the measures and better understanding, and that means among our educators as well. Some of these measures they're very familiar with. They've seen value-added scores for years. They've seen, you know, different pieces of this. They've seen tail surveys of data and so forth. But other pieces are new or they're being shown in a little different way. We're, you know, we're working on this on our end in terms of the process. I don't want us, again, to make any decisions based on any one piece of data at this point. And we want to look at the three-year trends and so forth. And it's going to take some time, in my opinion, to get to that comfort level. As far as external validation, I think that's something we can certainly do. And we've got some statisticians and others that we can call on. We have been looking at what's available in other places. I feel, as someone who's worked at the state level and the district level and accountability for longer than I'd like to admit, you know, I take this, you know, very seriously, because when you're making determinations about schools or individuals, that's a critical piece of data. And it does need to be in context. I want to look, you know, there are going to be situations where, as I mentioned earlier, there's been a population change and we need to flag a particular score. You'll see some schools at the end that have been identified as having insufficient data because there's not two years of data, or there's a significant number of missing pieces. So we're going to be cautious on any decisions that we make initially. But it's, you know, it is a good idea when we're a little further along with our comfort level to bring some others on board from outside the district to validate.
Thank you.
I still think it's a great tool. And I say that because even if it is still in its infancy, if I'm looking at this as a principle, it makes me start to think about what it is I need to do to improve, even if it's just one year of data. It's a really good tool.
Very good report.
I do want to add that we're also working on aligning, you know, with Dr. Register, his evaluation, you know, this is going to end up being a portion of this. We want to drill down into this in the data warehouse so a school could look at its goals, you know, you know, this is what your percent below basic were, you know, was, and you want to move it here. But also, a lot of our reports in the data warehouse are already getting at kind of the same thing. I don't know if you guys, if you actually saw this report or if it's on the dock to be coming up, you know, where you can look at a student and say, this student is projected to be proficient, and here's what the interim benchmarks say. You know, you're either not getting there or you're shooting weight, you know, you're doing very well. We're getting the students involved in all of this in their own growth, you know. So we really are working at coalescing around a lot of things, you know, that we've done separately, you know, that will look very much like this, you know, even at the student level. Because we want them to own their own academic growth. You know, that's how we make our progress. So I just wanted to say that that's also in the works around this.
I have two questions. The first one is, understand, if I'm understanding correctly, the school-level targets could change, will change every year. So how do you, from a timing perspective, when does this get updated with respect to understanding what the enrollment looks like for a school? So if their farm numbers change significantly or at all, so when does that update happen to better inform that school leader what their work ahead looks like for them?
And let me clarify that the targets for these different, for these measures, some of them are going to be consistent. The percent proficient and advanced targets right now are consistent from year to year until we decide that it's time for the district to raise the bar. But the achievement level increase is another story because it is based on past history. In terms of timing, we're dependent on getting the data back from the state, but our goal is to shoot for the start of school. Some of the measures will be available to us before August. Others, like graduation rate, will lag a little bit behind, but we'll probably have a version one that we roll out in the summer based on the measures we have at that point, and then update it as, you know, early in the school year. This is still, you know, still being validated. We're going to get the third year of data back this summer and make, you know, some additional tweaks. This will evolve over time. Again, we'll have new achievement measures coming onboard. We may decide that, you know, the bar's not high enough in a particular case, but I don't anticipate significant shifts this first year. And getting back to the question of validity and Mr. Pingston's point, it's a situation that if we're using it for school improvement planning and evaluating the work that we're doing, I think it's more rigorous than a lot of the measures that are currently in place. But when you start talking about personnel decisions and all of that, we want to have that external validation. But this, I've been involved in validating state tests and state accountability systems in the past, and it's an ongoing process. As you get more data, you review it, you make adjustments as needed. But there's also face validity. You know, we go into schools every day, our educators, our leadership, and there should be some relationship between what we see happening and what we expect to see in terms of data. But there are also going to be some surprises, some schools that have reputations, good or bad, that perform a little differently. And that's part of the reason we have a system like this, because it's not just about that reputation. But we take it very seriously, but we, you know, the first thing is to have the right measures, but then you have to have accurate data along the way. But also, that combination is important. So we will continue to gather feedback and this will evolve. But we think it's a good start, but the work's not done yet.
I have a question. Let's go back to the goals under achievement level increases. Who sets those goals? Is that set at the school level by the principal? Is that, are those goals set through your office?
Okay, as far, are you talking about the column in white, the 13 goal?
Well, at first I'm thinking about the 12. I am concerned that the 13 column is consistently less than the 12.
Yeah, and there's a reason for that. The 12 column was what it would take to get 100 percentage of points last year. These goals that are set, they're not anything official in terms of the school evaluation. It was to give school, we rolled this out in January to principals for the first look. And we knew TCAP was a few months away. We wanted to give them some number that was hopefully realistic, but ambitious, that we could say, this will get you two-thirds of the way to the ultimate number of points you can get, which would put you on track for excel. It's kind of a starting point, but it's not an official goal. What you really need, you know, our ultimate goal is going to be what it takes to get 100% of points. And that's, again, a mathematical calculation in our office based on your previous data, with an expectation that the greatest growth has to occur for the lowest achieving students. But it's that 50%, 40%, 30% model. And we still want to, that's one that we want to continue to validate. Personally, I thought it was going to be so far out of the range of schools that it wouldn't be realistic. And then we saw that we actually have schools that get there. And so that tells us, if one school can do it, you know, maybe it is more than just, you know, wishful thinking. So we wanted something, all of our goals to get to 100% are extremely high targets.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, go ahead.
After you.
Okay. This is an extraordinary piece of work, period. I can't believe you did all this fancy math and thinking and squeezed it into three pages. It's incredible. So I'm extremely excited about it. So I had actually, my mind is, I think the temptation actually is to proceed with almost too much caution, because aside from all the fancy math that's underneath the surface of this, I think it accords also with a lot of just common sense, you know, when you just stare at it and don't get too caught up in all the detail of the math behind the numbers. And so, so my mind is jumping to just like the so what, you know, in terms of how it might drive action or not. Because presumably, if you land in a certain bucket, we, I think, we created this in order then for a set of actions perhaps to be applied to that bucket. So whatever the buckets are labeled, because I couldn't care less whether they're excelling, achieving, you know, A, B, C, D, the question is like, what are a set of actions that apply to each bucket? And I'm curious, so for example, in the excelling category, I mean, you could assume, for example, that we would want to give them full autonomy, 100% control over all their budget, you know, because they've proven themselves, unless it depends on three years of data. Like, that could be an extreme of just like an action that's applied to a bucket based on what we see here. You know, on the target bucket, what's currently labeled as the target bucket, you can, I mean, this is our, we're in a dire place with these schools, given their total performance points. What do we think needs to be done broadly? And I know you all have thought about it, the smiles.
This is where I'll hand the mic over to the gentleman on the right. But I will make one comment too. Again, as a statistician, I want to proceed cautiously in terms of the validation process. But I do feel, I know in having worked at different levels with data for a lot of years that we've made big decisions with a lot less information than this. So I think.
Yeah. Yes, this is exactly what I'm thinking of, yes.
I think I'm comfortable, you know, with a lot of the program improvement pieces that need to occur. But again, I'm always careful about using one data point, one year, and that's why we, there are going to be, there are going to be schools that are low on this current listing that do require action, and there's a challenge in terms of turning those schools around. What I don't want to do is disincentivize people to go into those challenging positions. We need to look at growth and progress.
Let me start. I mean, this conversation that you're asking could get us in a lot of trouble, but I'm going to, I'm going to address it from hindsight. There were decisions that I had to make last year on principal changes and conversations with principals about your performance and your future in this district. When this came out, it validated what the decisions I made to change one of those, two of those principals, and the decision that I made to have a conversation with one principal, that this is your last year of employment if these triggers don't change. It aligned perfectly with this document. And those conversations are leading to increases in two of those, well, all three, four of those schools, that their data is trending up from their, where their kids ended last year on the EOC through the first three formative assessments this year. Two of those schools went up in every single category. It aligned perfectly with what this document was saying. So I think that is important, that we can look at resource allocation, we can look at who the leaders will be in our district, both as the lead principal or possibly the principal. But as Paul said, it's multiple measures, it's not looking at one area. We've also had the conversation today with Human Capital about can these triggers or can these movements within the levels trigger more resources or merit pay or drive incentive pay? So we are looking at those areas, and this is opening up a lot of conversations. This is the first document that I've seen since I've been here that pulls everything together. This data is very overwhelming when you're pulling from 15 different sources. And when I go into the data warehouse and try to pull reports, I can print out 10 different reports and start looking at them, and then the data gets so overwhelming, you lose focus of where you are. This is the first attempt to pull it all together that has really made sense to us and has caused a lot of creative conversations and heated conversations. And I think that's a positive, because it is putting us in the right.
Yeah, I want to add, tag on to that last comment though. I am really pleased with constructive way that this data's been used and the way that it's been received by our principals. This could be scary. This is scary for a lot of people. But I think we're using it very constructively to chart a course of improvement. And it's the best data that I've ever seen that would allow us to do that in a very comprehensive way. Alan, you had a comment?
Well, I probably have too many, so I'll just say a few things. And I'm probably the one who can simplify and put in like caveman terms as much as anything. I think the goal issue points to one thing that's already happening. So what Paul, all Paul was saying there is that when he dished this out to the principals, first thing they want to know is, well, how do I get into the top green? And that's just a mathematical calculation of how do you get into the top green? He'll correct me later if I'm a little bit off. But simplifying it is responding to what Dr. Register's talking about in terms of the way the principals respond to this kind of information. So what happens, number one, even if you don't use it, if you just put it out there, it changes the conversation. It gives everybody sort of balanced set of metrics. And we get, one of the things we spend a lot of time arguing about over the last, as long as I've been here, you know, the last 15 years or so, is, is this school successful or not? And you've got, you know, people say, well, look, it's high proficiency. Yeah, but it's low Tvas, you know? And then another, well, it's high Tvas, but it's low proficiency. So which schools are good? Well, it depends. If you want them all to be good, they can all be good because you can find a data point. And if you want them all to be bad, you can make them all bad because you can find a data point. This is an attempt to kind of balance out those measures and say, how do they relatively reinforce one another in terms of our expectations of what successful schools will do in terms of outcomes? And that, to me, is pretty exciting, because once you have that level of the conversation, then you have networking that starts to occur. It's the principals who are connecting with other people where they have a red and they're looking for a green, and they're already starting to have those connections and those conversations about why those differences are occurring, whether or not we ever get actively involved. But that also infuses and feeds the whole idea of lead principals and networks. So if we can select those that are performing at high levels across the board and connect them intentionally as lead principals to help develop and assist other schools in those networks that are naturally forming as a result of where the data shows those needs might be, then I think we're unleashing capacity to improve within the district and within the people in the district without having to, you know, hope that we'll find one day the big magic program that we can drop on the district and solve all our problems. So those are the, those are things that are going to happen just by getting it out there. They're also going to change the conversation in the community. We have a, maybe, I don't know if you've been following it, but there's somewhat of a conversation that's out there about whether a certain type of school is stronger than another certain type of school. And of course, I'm talking about the age-old magnet school debate. But that's been around in public education forever. This changes the dynamic of that conversation, because you can have schools of all different types performing in these different category levels, and then they can cross-learn from one another, which feeds the collaboration we're trying to have across the sectors of types of schools. But I think, you know, But I think, you know, very clearly, I mean, the original impulse for my getting involved in this had to do with performance management of charters. Here's where we write a contract, we have to specify the outcomes. We've never been very good at specifying what the outcomes are. This does that. And so, very clearly, from the beginning, this has been, you know, driven and supported by, you know, the charter school community and the need for performance management and outcomes at a high level, and, you know, kind of holding true to the whole question of replicating and expanding those schools that are achieving at high levels and closing and moving out those that are not, not happening at high levels. And so, we have the frameworks for all those policies in place. This is the battery to make all of that work from the charter school side, and I think it has implications that can be extrapolated through the rest of the schools in the district, too. I'll stop there, but...
I agree, it changes the conversation on a lot of different levels, not just at the school level, but in the community. As a parent, it changes my conversation, too, because if I'm looking at this and if I have a question about, okay, so you're achieving at an excellent level, but, and I'll go back to the example that I gave earlier with School D. If you're achieving at a high level, but your potential projected ACT scores are low, as a parent, I need to know what you're doing to get my student up to speed. So, I do like the way that this is set up, and I do think you're absolutely correct that it changes the conversation. One thing I want to remind everybody about is, the most important thing about this document is it's a draft. This is not in stone, and there's a lot of work that's yet to be performed on it, but I think right now it's a great tool, and I'm super excited about it. And I'm sorry, Ms. Shepherd, you had a comment?
I have a question, actually, and a comment. You mentioned that we would get some additional data as it becomes available. Will we be receiving that data as well?
Yeah, we will have another year of data soon to share, and I do have a, some documentation that we put together that gets into the nuts and bolts a little more that we touched on tonight, that most people said, you know, I want to see the big picture, and we've left it at that, but we've shared it with principals. Again, it's in the initial stages, because we've got a lot of training to do to drill down in this data, but I'll, we'll make that available when it's, when it's completed.
Okay. That would be great, and thank you very much for all this rich data and taking us through the remedial tutorial on understanding. It was really great. Thank you all.
So, I can conclude this with, by saying that Paul knows one thing, I can outdo Alan on the caveman pocket. I do not want this report unless it's in color.
Thank you.
The color coding makes a real difference, and when we look at trend data, it's going to be smaller and more compact, and we'll have two or three years' worth of data side by side, and that's when the colors will really come into play, I think.
Yeah, and I'll just add, first of all, a lot of people have been involved in this process, but, you know, how we roll this out in terms of sharing with different groups, including parents and all, there will be different versions, and, but the categories and the colors do get people's attention, so there'll be some, this is not all of the numeric pieces that go into the calculations. For the ones who have to work with this on a regular basis, they need much more detail, but we will have more user-friendly versions, but they'll all be in color, I promise that, Dr. Register.
That's a great document. So, any other questions? Michael?
Thank you. Just, I guess, a quick question. So, if we look at percent 21-plus on ACT, and we pull out middle schools as a predictor, do we know, is that, is that taken at a fifth grade and an eighth grade? Is it a composite of years? And so, I think about the schools, for example, that show really, we could, we could look at School D as an example, right? They had really, really high gains. So, it's surprising to see that the predictor score would show 3.7% if they're having this kind of year-over-year gain. So, I'm just wondering, when do we, how's that score?
As we've mentioned, 67th percentile is the projection to get there. And typically, students who are, you know, who have, are projected to 21, when you look at them at fourth grade, so it's fourth grade and eighth grade that we're looking at here, the end, the terminal year in a tier for here. So, we put this in there because proficient and advanced actually masks quite a bit that you can see by using this particular measure, because most of the kids who are projected to be 21 are actually in the top quartile now, okay, statewide, not in, not in this district. So, they, probably, that school, and I don't know which one it is right now, probably moved a lot of students, had tremendous growth, but aren't in that top quartile yet. And we do end up wanting to get every student into that now top third in the state, top quartile in fourth and eighth grade. So, they could, they could be practically advanced on the TCAP and not have that, that projection to 21. And that's what we wanted to call attention to. I mean, I have to say, I pulled these data, and I almost cried when I looked at them because there were so few students, you know, and this is statewide. And we want to get that out there as the final end goal. We're not there yet.
And I'll just add, and I know it goes back to Ms. May's point, too, that it is a very low percentage, and we are concerned about that, but it starts the conversation. This is the first time we've seen this data summarized on the projections. In the past, it was only available on a student-by-student basis on the T-VAS website. We got it last year electronically for the first time, so this is eye-opening to a number of our educators, but it gives us a higher target, a higher bar to shoot for, because, again, yeah, most of these students are going to, do need to be advanced in order to get there. What we didn't want to do in our measures was limit ourselves to only thinking about these so-called bubble kids and this lower threshold. We wanted to look at, making again those connections to college and career, and we're preparing students for life beyond, beyond our high schools.
I think it's a great tool. Again, I'll say that, I won't harp on School D, but I will say that because, the color coding, thank you, it actually sort of brings it up to you, and it kind of opens your eyes, and it gives you a direction to go in. And if I'm the principal of this school, I know what I need to target. So, this is a fantastic tool. So, thank you. Any other questions? Dr. Register, last words?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
We look forward to sharing this future iterations with you.
And we'll move very quickly on to announcements. We'll start with Dr. Gentry. Dr. Brandon? Ms. Fearing?
Yes, I would like to recognize Dr. London De Priest. She has, she and Dr. Register have received notification that she will receive the highest award that Castle presents. It's a national award for social and emotional well-being of our students, and it's for her contributions that she's made for the social and emotional well-being of our students, and I think we should give her an standing ovation.
I have a couple. I just want to remind my colleagues in the viewing audience, if we still have them with us, that a week from Saturday, on Saturday, April 6, will be our Third Youth Safety Summit with Craig Scott as the keynote speaker. Registration is at 8:30. The event starts at 9 and ends at noon. We have some great breakout sessions that Tony Mangers has helped plan, and we, this event is free to the public. It's for students, for middle school students and high school students and their parents. I encourage everyone to attend this event. And secondly, I would like to give a huge thank you to Jay Steele, Sidney Rogers from the Alignment Foundation, and to Paula Barclay from McGavin High School for their presentations and participation and leadership. Dawson Homage Education Day today, they rocked. They were really, really good. And we had two student ambassadors who came out on a snowy spring break day to help. Rachel and Brody were there to help us, so I thank all of them for their participation.
Mr. Pinkston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to thank you guys again for the information tonight. Just a reminder, I'm planning to work with Dr. Register and probably others in the room to help formulate a motion for us to talk about in the April meeting regarding our academic achievement policy. I'd just really do want to have a real open discussion about that when the time comes, and try to circulate some drafts ahead of time to get, to get everybody thinking, if that's permissible. So, just reminding, I think I brought notice in January to do something in February, and we kind of pushed it off to wait for this discussion. So, this is informing that greatly. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes? Ms. Froeg?
I, too, just want to say thank you for putting this together, and I think it's really been desperately needed, and my brief experience on the board, you know, I've tried to find data on schools that places our schools on a very clear continuum, and I think the general answer I've gotten is that we're often comparing apples to oranges, and so I'm thankful for this, and thank you for your great work on this. And I'm going to use this as a basis for my announcement, because I'm trying to highlight some of the good stuff that's going on at District 9, which we have, I'm pleased with some of the scores that I'm seeing here, but I just want to highlight Harpeth Valley Elementary School out in our area, which we have ranked on our, this current list as number three. And I think what's unique about this school is that we, is it performs well in achievement and also in growth, which is a hard feat to accomplish because they already have so many high-achieving students. So, I want to just give them a congratulations for ranking so high. And I also noticed Glendale Elementary School on here, which is performing very well, and just want to mention that they were recently ranked number one, the number-one elementary school in Tennessee by the site School Digger, based on their score, so just want to congratulate them. Thanks.
Dr. Register?
Yes, we, I attended a great event today at Belmont University, and I want to recognize Belmont and President Bob Fisher and Chair Marty Dickens for starting a bridge program. And you'll read about this, and I meant to bring something written about it, but just didn't think about it as I walked out of my office. The bridge program is going to give 25 full scholarships to Belmont University to students from Stratford High School and Maplewood High School. This was announced today with a summer bridge program for academic preparation for these students to get ready this summer to attend Belmont and be successful. And I think President Fisher and members of faculty at Belmont recognized the turnaround that's happening in those two schools and what we have going on there, and the fact that they're, the great majority of children who attend those schools will be first-time family collegegoers, and that it is a challenge, and that many of our children in those schools are economically disadvantaged. And what a great start today to see them announce the fact that this summer we will have 25 scholarships, full scholarships to Belmont University from Maplewood and Stratford.
Excellent.
That's awesome.
And I just have a couple of announcements before we adjourn. First, I want to give a big shout-out and a great big thank you to Joe Bass and our Communications Department, whose fingers are blazing from all of the reports on intercession this last week. He did a fantastic job. I've read every single one of them. Also, Ms. Shepherd and I will be attending the National School Board's Association Conference in April, 12 through the 15. The great thing about this is that we will actually be presenting, Jay Steele and I, and along with Mark Hill with the Chamber of Commerce, will be presenting on the Saturday, the 13th, on the Academy of Nashville Model, and so, we're taking this national baby. I think it's going to be a fantastic presentation, and I'm really looking forward to it. Also, on April 11, there will be a community meeting held at Priest Lake Baptist Church to discuss the proposed plan for two new schools in the Antioch area. So, that will be April 11, 2013, at 6:00 PM, Priest Lake Baptist Church. There will be more information to follow. And having said that, Ms. Froeg?
This meeting's adjourned.